All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like for everyone to rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please remain standing for a moment of silence. So the first thing I want to say, I love it when we have students here, especially young students, because they are the loudest ones saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Y'all go outstanding. Happy New Year to everyone. And everyone here tonight, we're, I guess we're making history for Pamlico County, because this very well might be the first time the Board of Education has met on the last Monday of the month, so, and I'm very hot on this mic. So, Happy New Year, it is the end of the month, and another New Year's up here, and the end of this month is almost here, so it's almost February, so. So, welcome to everyone. At this time, fellow board members, you've had a chance to review our open session minutes from our December 2024 meeting. December, December the 2nd meetings, if there's no changes or additions or deletions to those, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Everyone's had a chance to review our closed session minutes from our December meeting. If there are any changes, additions, or deletions, we'll make those in closed session. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight?
Have none, Mr. President.
Here are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. All right, moving right along to good news, Mr. Rice.
Good evening. I would like to take this time to present the Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County High School. I actually will do Pamlico Middle School too, I'm going to read theirs, they're not here, but we're still going to recognize them. First, at Pamlico Middle School, we have Abraham Stevens. Abraham is a seventh grade student and was nominated based on his strong work ethic, intrinsic motivation, and respectful nature. Mr. Gaskell had this to say about Abraham. He's a natural leader, is always ready to lend a hand to others, and is an overall hard worker. Abraham is respected and well-liked by his teachers and his peers. He is a, he is a positive asset to our school, both in the classroom and on the field. Abraham's science teacher, Ms. Megan Brooks, states that Abraham always helps to foster a positive and supportive environment in the classroom, often offering to help his peers. He quickly takes initiative in group projects and class discussions, inspiring his classmates to engage in their education. Abraham has a contagious positive attitude and greets me with a warm, genuine smile every single morning. I am so grateful to have him in my classroom this year. We look forward to the great things that Abraham will continue to accomplish. Congratulations, Abraham Stevens, Pamlico County Rotary Student of the Month. Next, from Pamlico County High School, we have Audrey Leon. Ms. Lanchy states, it is my honor to recognize Audrey Leon as the Rotary Student of the Month. Audrey is an exceptional student whose commitment, enthusiasm, and personality shine brightly in everything she does. Mr. Norman shares that Audrey is a hard-working and motivated student who always gives 100% in her efforts. He describes her as having a wicked sense of humor and has truly enjoyed the opportunity to be her teacher. Ms. Buck's highlighted Audrey's ability to excel in everything she dedicates herself to, describing her as witty and possessing great committee timing. She commends Audrey for her ability to balance responsibility with a lighthearted approach to life and an invaluable gift that will serve her well in the future. Ms. Collins emphasizes Audrey's eagerness to learn, her readiness to lead, and her dedication to supporting her peers in group projects. Audrey's commitment to growth is evident in her openness to constructive feedback, her strong work ethic, and her reliability. Ms. Collins notes that Audrey is an invaluable asset to the classroom culture. Beyond her academic achievements, Audrey is a well-rounded individual. She is a multi-sport athlete, she participates in JROTC, and she is involved in theater, all of which showcase her creativity and versatility. Audrey is a joy to teach and an inspiration to her peers. Congratulations, Audrey Leon, Pamlico County High School Rotary Student of the Month.
Congratulations, and y'all are more than welcome to stay, but if you do need to leave because you've got school tomorrow, that's okay. Okay, moving on to our public comment for tonight. We do have two individuals that have signed up for tonight, and so I'm going to read what I'm, have to read before public comment. The Pamlico County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. According to Policy 1326, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults in statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. We're not going to worry about that tonight, because we've got two very good people that are here to share some really good news. Our first one, Mr. Zach Snell. He is our new president of Pamlico Community College, so congratulations.
Well, thank, thank you all, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very happy to be here. And really, I just wanted to provide a quick introduction of myself. Like they mentioned, I am Zach Schnell, and I am now working with the, as the president of Pamlico Community College. I've been here in the county for over nine years now and everything, and that's, and, you know, decided to stay because I really enjoy it here, basically. And so, I really look forward to working with you all and anybody else who ever has any ideas or open to suggestions. Please don't ever hesitate to reach out to us. We are here to help serve you all as the community, and I really look forward to helping our, not only our community grow, but also becoming a hub, a hub of opportunities for everyone here in, in the county. So, please, at any point in time, if anybody ever wants to, please reach out, and I really look to, look forward to working with you all and collaborating with you all. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Again, if you see the Pamlico Community College commercials, he's the one down outside holding, yup. Yup. We look forward to good collaboration and, and good work, because we're here all for the same thing, and that's our students of this county, so again, congratulations. Moving on to more good news, Ms. Vicky Mosley Jones here tonight to talk about the Education Committee for the NAACP. I guess this is going to be your 2025 goals.
Thank you. Remember, don't start me until I get up. And then I'm going to tell a joke, so don't start me yet. I am Vicky Mosley Jones, and I am the, "Transportation is an issue." I'm sure you've seen me on television, haven't you? Oh, okay, but anyway. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I come to you this evening on behalf of the Pamlico County Chapter of the North National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP's Education Committee. The Education Committee is a subcommittee of our organization, and the purpose of our committee is to seek to eliminate segregation and other discriminatory practices in public education, study local educational conditions affecting minority groups, investigate any concerns in the public school system, to keep informed of school conditions and strive to correct abuses where, where found, promote parental involvement in education. We have five members on our committee, I'm the chair, Nellie Pierceall, Dr. Wanda Dawson, Maxine Mattis, and Tina Davis are our other members. So, we started our journey with the school board in 2018, and some of our accomplishments during that time was that we sponsored the first SAT/ACT boot camp for Pamlico County High School students, and it was offered on weekends, and we had, we paid for the teachers to come in and do the tutoring, and we also paid for their lunch. We've partnered with PITCO and the retired school personnel to bring, to do tutoring. In addition to that, we sponsor a $600 annual competitive scholarship to graduating seniors. We actively attend Board of Education meetings, as we are here tonight, and report back to our chapter our observations. In 2022, we began to inquire of the district our concern over the racial disparity in the hiring of teachers and administrators of color. We formed a partnership with Pamlico County School District Administration, board members, parents, and community activists, which provides quarterly updates on the system's improvement. We have seen positive hiring and placement of people of color in the classrooms and in administrative positions since our meeting with the district. We felt it necessary that children in our system are, see individuals who look like them in the classrooms and other leadership roles. Our concerns were presented to a board such as yourselves, and although many of you, as I look around the room tonight, of the original members that we first met with are no longer here. So, this is why I felt it necessary to come tonight, so that we could speak to the new members as well and to update them on our progress. We are proud of the partnership that has been established between the NAACP. Between the NAACP.
I'm sorry, your time is up, Ms. Mosley Jones, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to discuss our goals.
I'm sorry, public comment, we have to be fair, and so we've got the three minutes, so we've got to work through that. But you can always have more time, at the next meeting, you can speak as well.
No, no, you, oh, well, that's real interesting, I have done that before.
How long, how much more have you got?
I just wanted to update you all on our goals for this year.
How much more have you got?
It's just a few more bullets that I just wanted to tell what our goals for this year are.
Can you do it quickly?
But there's no way that I would want to be out of order, as your attorney has said, so I'll sit down.
If you, no.
No, I'm good, thank you.
We're fine with you to finish your goals.
Maybe I'll come back.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you for our public comment tonight. With that, we're going to move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott, and just want to welcome everybody tonight. We have had a great, though be it a little bit unusual, beginning to the new semester. You knew we'd have so much snow in Pamlico County, so it was, that was a pleasant surprise. I know the, everybody was sort of excited about that, particularly our kids, a few grown-ups too. As I start the superintendent report tonight, though, it is Board Member Appreciation Month, and I just want to say how much we do appreciate our board members. Really and truly, thank you for what you do and everything, and I know our schools are going to be sharing a few things with you in a few minutes, but I wanted to kick things off by just saying how much you are appreciated, so thank you. I do want to begin with, well, next, the membership report. There's a little bit of a, of a change, as is, seems always the case in January. Pamlico County Primary School gained two students, so have 334 now. As of January 20th, there was no change at Fred Anderson, 144 students. Lost one student at Pamlico County Middle School, down to 243. High school enrollment now is at 395, that is a reduction of, of 26, but that is the result of 27 early graduates, so they actually gained one. They have a net loss of 26, so we have a net loss overall in the system of 25. We're down, the current enrollment is 1,116 students. So, that's the membership report as of the 20th of this month. All right. Next, you know, we have just really, as Mr. Prescott said, this is the first time, maybe in 140 years, I think Ms. Harwick told me, that we have deviated from meeting on the first Monday of the month. And we did that, not just to say we, let's just do something new. We really did that in, in an effort to make our board members, our board meetings more accessible to our partners on the Board of Commissioners, so we could attend their meetings and they could attend ours. And we do have a commissioner here tonight, thank you, Mr. Heath, for being here. But with the snow, they also had to cancel their meeting last week, so they're, they're actually going to be meeting at seven, but we appreciate you being here early on, and we look forward to a, a partnership with them. I was supposed to have met with them last week and delivered a quarterly update. With that meeting being canceled, I'll actually be there next week, on February 3rd, to do that. So, board members, you're more than welcome to come then as well. One of the main things I want to talk about tonight in this report is that we are about to venture on a, a journey to develop a new strategic plan for our district. And that sounds like, you know, what does that have to do with me or you? Or, has to have something to do with all of us. What we want to do is really, we're going to be talking to our parents, our teachers, our stakeholders, our community partners, our elected leaders, our administrators, on what we want to see in Pamlico County now and in, in the future. So, we're going to be talking to you, you're going to be hearing a lot about shaping Pamlico County schools for the, for the coming years, and so we're looking forward to, to that, so be on the lookout for that. But, just as we're excited about planning for the future, there are a lot of great things happening in our district right now, and we're going to hear from our principals tonight, so I'm not going to steal any of their thunder, I'm going to have them come up and give their, just an update on each school as we've started this new semester. We're going to start with the high school tonight, Ms. Lanchy asked if she could go first, because with the weather, we have rescheduled, and we are playing Joan Senior tonight in basketball, so she'll be wanting to get over to that. So, Ms. Lanchy, come forward and bring us an update on the high school.
Good evening, board members. I want to start by saying thank you and Happy School Board Appreciation Month. I'm truly personally grateful for the support that you provide to me, to my staff, to our students. You need only tune in virtually and watch a school board meeting elsewhere to see that we truly do have the best school board, so I'm very grateful, thank you so much. I want to start by sharing about some academic performance. One of the beautiful things about high school is we truly get like a second first day of school, so we're starting a new semester. But I do want to share with you a little bit about how we did first semester academically. So, our proficiency on our EOCs in English 2, 55.6% of our kids were proficient. Just to give you some context, last year for the school year, we were 53.7% proficient, and this 55.6% represents all standard classes, so none of our honor students have even tested yet. Math 1, we were 83.3% proficient, and math 3, we were 92.7% proficient. So, I'm really, really proud, I think it speaks to the work that our teachers are doing in the classroom and how hard our students are working. We also, for work keys testing, which we do have more kids that are going to test in the spring, I think 10, if that's correct, Ms. Potter, yup. So, right now, we're sitting at 68% of our students scoring silver or higher, so that's a little bit shy of our goal, which is 75% for the school year. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Rice and the maintenance team. We were a little bit wary at the high school about all the construction and how that would impact our day-to-day, but they have been extremely responsive to the changing needs. We've had a few different issues. There was a gas leak, which I'm sure you all are aware of. Fencing kind of disrupted some of our evacuation routes, and Mr. Rice was on top of having a physical structure moved so we could ensure the safety of our students. And recently, we had a scheduled power outage, and the communication has been great, and so everything has been really, really smooth so far, so thank you to you and thank you to our maintenance team for that. I also wanted to share, we've got a couple of new staff members. Mr. Brandon Akins is teaching in our science department, he's also going to be our new head football coach. And Donnie Richards is our new PE, strength and conditioning teacher, and I invite you all to come and walk through their classrooms. They are doing a tremendous job, the weight room is like a well-oiled machine, so please feel free to come and visit and check them out. I also wanted to share, I think this is important, even though we have a couple of vacancies at the high school, because of the staff that we have, we are functioning like a fully-staffed high school. And it's because the staff has pulled together, and they are flexible, and they pitch in, and they're willing to help. We have a math teacher, teaching four periods a day. Ms. Wayne is a science teacher, she's pushing in and doing inclusion in a math 1 classroom. Shannon Callen, I don't know if you're familiar with her, she's a long-term sub, she's been long-term subbing for four years. She's, I call her our utility player. I can literally put her anywhere in the building and trust that she's going to provide a level of instruction that matches any certified teacher in my building. Chef Reese has stepped in mid-season and has taken over coaching. We just have a great, great staff, and so I just wanted to, to kind of shout them out and give them some credit for the hard work that they're doing. If you didn't, I'm sure most of you have seen, but Master Chief was just recognized as a Morehead Kane Scholar Impact Educator. The work that our ROTC instructors do with those kids, they're probably the only other people that spend more time in that building than I do, and Coach Rose. But they do, they, they work really, really hard and they love our kids, and so I appreciate them both for that. And then last, just a little athletic update, our wrestling team, just, they are four-time conference champs, I think that's right, yes, so for the fourth year in a row, they're conference champs, which is really awesome. So, we celebrate them. I kept it short, because we have a little video for you from the high school, just to thank you for all that you do. Please come visit us anytime, we welcome you, okay?
Hey, hey, I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you so much for all your time, hard work, and dedication. It doesn't go unnoticed. I'm so thankful for all that each of you do to ensure our students and staff are your number-one priority. Please know how much you are truly appreciated. Happy School Board Appreciation.
Master Chief and I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything you do for our school, and thank you for your continued support of the NJROTC program. We appreciate you all very, very much.
Good evening, board members. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you. Thank you for your hard work, thank you for your leadership, your dedication, thank you for your vision. We're so appreciative of everything that you do for Pamlico County Schools.
I would like to say thank you to our school board for helping and supporting us in our sports and our education. I want to say that being here at Pamlico County has really changed me and made me see a lot of new things and see things in different perspectives.
Hi there, board members. Just wanted to say thank you for supporting teachers and always having the best interest of Pamlico County students at heart. Thank you, have a great month.
I would like to thank each and every one of you for each and everything that you do, especially the things that are unseen. From the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you, and I love you guys, and have a blessed day. Chef Reese, come out.
As a teacher, I want to personally thank each of you for the time, energy, and heart that you pour into our schools. Your support and leadership makes a real difference in the lives of our students and our classrooms. We see the impact of your decisions every day, and we thank you. We see the impact of your decisions every day, and we thank you.
Thank you to the Pamlico County Board of Education members for all you do for your teachers, students, and residents of Pamlico County. We thank you so much.
Hello. I just wanted to take a moment to sincerely thank the Pamlico County School Board, their unwavering dedication to our schools. Your dedication to our students, staff, and the Pamlico County community at large have such a meaningful impact. And as a parent of a recent Pamlico County High School graduate who is thriving in college, and as a long-term sub, I can see the benefits of your dedication, the fruits of your labor, both here and beyond. We are so grateful for all that you do. Thanks so much.
Happy Board Member Appreciation Month. I want to thank you for all that you do for Pamlico County Schools, teachers, staff, and especially our students. You have a big job, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you to the Board of Education for your unwavering support and dedication to our students and community.
Your commitment to providing quality education and resources commits significant impact on our growth and success. We are deeply grateful for your hard work and leadership. Go Saints!
Hi, board members. When I first started at Pamlico more than ten years ago, I didn't have this little one with me. And now every day, we get to choose to get up a little earlier and drive a little farther because we choose Pamlico. And it would be hard to choose Pamlico without such a great board that supports our schools. We really are the best-kept secret in this area, and I'm so glad that we get to choose Pamlico. Thank you, board members, for supporting our schools, our students, families, our communities, and for providing such a strong heartbeat for this area. We love you guys. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Be the Pamlico.
We do.
Thank you for supporting drone team at their trips.
Thank you for supporting air and float and all of our equipment.
Thank you for supporting our drone team.
Thank you for supporting our color guard.
Thanks for supporting the academic team and all of our trips.
I love that.
Supporting the athletic team.
Thank you for supporting the oriental team.
Thank you for supporting our underneath checks.
Thank you for helping the program. Without your help, we would not be where we are today.
Without your support, we wouldn't have been able to do anything.
Because of your support with all of these things, you're helping support the future good citizens and leaders of tomorrow.
Two, one.
Thank you for your support!
We'll just continue in reverse order. Mr. Joshua Gaskell, principal at Pamlico County Middle School.
I'll follow with Ms. Lanchy there as far as extending our sincere thanks and appreciation for each one of you for serving on our Board of Education from all of us here at Pamlico County Middle School. Your commitment and dedication to our students, teachers, schools, and our community is commendable. Thank you for giving your time and expertise in order to ensure that every child has a chance to succeed. Personally, I value our partnership and appreciate all of your support. Thank you. Well, it's hard to believe how quickly time has passed since our last update. As the Bon Jovi song goes, we're halfway there. PCMS set out this summer to continue achieving our legacy of excellence, and I feel we have done just that. Here are a few of our successes to date. We have achieved our wildly important goal of reducing the number of discipline referrals by fifty percent compared to last school year for not just the first quarter, but also the second quarter. I credit this to our amazing teachers and staff in regards to setting high expectations for all students. High expectations are truly the key to everything, and I commend our students for buying into this shared commitment that we hold at PCMS. We have a reliable and consistent group of community members and parents working shifts in order to keep our media center operational throughout the school day. This has been extremely helpful in allowing teachers to send students to check out books or have a separate setting for a test. Despite having this heartfelt deficit, we cannot thank these volunteers enough for their selfless contributions of time each week to our school. This example, among many others, just speaks volumes about the Pamlico County community that we are so very thankful and grateful for. We have been able to celebrate and highlight the academic and character achievements of many of our students these first two nine weeks. There is so much good coming from our students, and we, as a school, are proud to recognize and celebrate their accomplishments. We recognize our fall sports accomplishments. The PCMS volleyball team were named conference and tournament champs. Our PCMS football team took the title of conference champs. We are very proud of our student athletes. We are currently at the end of our basketball and wrestling seasons, and will begin our spring sport soon, so please come on out and support our Canes. While we have accomplished so much that the first half of this school year, our work is not done. We are focusing on student engagement, master scheduling for next year, and resources related to curriculum alignment. We are only as good as our people, and fortunately, we have the very best at PCMS. I'm so very thankful for each and every one. We also extend a warm welcome to everyone to come by our school, so please take us up on our open door policy. Again, we thank you for your continued support in helping us achieve our legacy of excellence at PCMS.
Ms. Sharon Carter-Moore, Fred Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to keep this really short and simple because I have a few All-Stars behind me with a special message for you all. First and foremost, let me say thank you to each and every one of you sitting up there. I don't know all that you do, but I can only imagine all that you do. Running a school, just one, is difficult, and with you having all four of our schools in your hands, I know that your hands are very full. So thank you so much for everything that you do for Pamlico County Schools. Just to share a little bit about what's been happening at Fred A., we've been trying to get out into the community, building community, working together for the success of our students. I've had the opportunity to meet with the, let me make sure I get it right, Pamlico County retired school personnel. We met off-campus. They had a meeting. They invited me to come over. And at that time, I took that opportunity to share with them a little bit about my story, a little bit about me, what brought me here to Pamlico County, and why I'm still here at Pamlico County. Also, I left with some goodies. They got together and then donated lots of supplies for our All-Stars, so I really appreciate that. I've also taken the time to meet with Hart Works, to tour their facility, to talk about what they're doing in support of our students and how we can help each other achieve the same goal, and that is successful student outcomes. I am thrilled to say that we've hired a couple new staff who are happy to be in our company. We have a new fifth-grade math teacher, Ms. Delap. She is not new to Pamlico County. She was here before. She taught for H. She is, she knows few of the people in our community, and she is a wonderful asset to our building. I'm very happy to have her with us. And just to let you know a little bit about Ms. Delap, I met her in Craven County. We worked together briefly. She's brilliant. She holds two degrees and one in biochemistry, of all things, and she taught at the high school level. So our kids have just attached to her, and they are working and performing at record speed. Also, starting next week, we are, I'm proud to introduce Ms. Moore. I think she's in the building somewhere. She's going to be our new instructional and administrative support specialist. This woman comes to us with an EC certification. I'm just going to stop there because that says a lot. She has a proven track record for academic success. She's been in the top twenty-five percent of high scores in the state and for her district four years in a row. I am jumping, if I could, like, out of my boots right now. I'm very excited about her presence in our building. She also has admin experience, task coordinator experience, and currently, or she was her last week as an instructional coach at a different county. So I am very delighted with these two new assets or two new All-Stars. I want to semi-end with saying, as a school, as at Fred A., as All-Stars, we've been really pulling together and working together to fill the gaps, and I'm going to say the needs. I'm going to give you a simple example. We have our data manager who's helping out in the front office as a secretary, and she came to me today. She was like, "Cartier-Moore, yearbook. We got to get our yearbook together. I've brought together a small team." And she was so excited about it. I was like, "Well, can I join the team?" Something as simple, a classroom teacher and our data manager coming together to support a need, and that's the recurring theme in our building, and I'm so proud to be a part of that. And lastly, we have this phenomenon happening, our All-Star Chorus, who are now taking gigs. They performed at this, last Sunday, at the Oriental Women's Club, and out of that performance, picked up two new performances. And tonight, they have prepared something for our board members to show their appreciation for all that you do. So without any further ado, our All-Star Chorus. You'll hear them, I promise, but this is for the board. I'm very proud of them. I'm very proud of the chorus as a whole. They amaze me every day. When did you learn this?
Today.
Today. After the regular chorus rehearsal with all twenty-six. These guys stayed a little extra to learn this song for you. And as you noted, they don't have any papers because they've already memorized it. So I hope you enjoy. We appreciate you.
You, you, you! You, you, you! We appreciate you. We think you are great. We appreciate you. Yeah, you're really great. We've made many decisions that this board, we know you do. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you! You, you, you! We appreciate you. Yeah, you are great. We appreciate you. Yeah, you can be beat. You've made many decisions that this board, we know you do. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you! You, you, you! We appreciate you. We think you are cool. We appreciate you. Yeah, you really are. You've made many decisions that this board, we know you do. Oh, we appreciate you. Yeah, yeah, we appreciate you. Oh, we appreciate you. We, yeah, you!
That was great.
That was so good.
Ms. Savannah Alexander, last but not least, hard to follow.
Very tough act to follow. I will spare you my singing. You'd all go running out of here. But I will start also by saying thank you. We had a legal update today, and I don't know if any of you who are also in it caught this at the end, but it's a quote that really stuck with me, and I think it kind of sums it up. The presenter said, "There's only one place that you can go where every child is going to get an education, and that's here." And it's a really big job, and we have really big shoes to fill, and we could not do that job without your support. So thank you to all of our school board members. We truly do appreciate you. To echo all of my colleagues and fellow Fred Anderson students here, we really appreciate you guys. So thank you. All right, a little bit about Pamlico Primary. We have a lot going on right now in January for a little primary school, and I'm excited to report about some upcoming events that we have. I can't believe it, but we have started planning our pre-K and kindergarten registration event for next school year. So that will be February twenty-eighth from eight o'clock to five o'clock at Pamlico Primary in our media center. Following that, a few weeks later, on March eighteenth, we'll be having our Math Family Night. That will serve as our spring title one night. That will be at Pamlico Primary School, and we'd love to have you there as well. So we're busy planning those two events, and I had really hoped that I would have some amazing reading data to share with you all tonight as an update to our wildly important goal that I shared with you in August, but the snow has thwarted our plan. We were doing data collection last week, so that has shifted to this week. I know it's going to be amazing just based on the teaching and learning that I've witnessed in our building, so I'm excited to share that with you all in the future. Other than that, we are excited to host all of our first-grade families this week at school. We have really focused on just trying to increase that family engagement and opportunities for parents to get in our building and see the wonderful things that happen at our school. So during library time this week, from ten oh five to ten fifty, we have invited all of our first-grade parents to come in and enjoy library time with their student. And our PTO board member, Ms. Jacqueline Jones, was there. They have been providing a breakfast to help welcome our guests, and they're reading with our kids. That's right in alignment with the goal that we have for our students this year with improving their reading proficiency. So we're excited just to kind of partner more with our community, get families in our building, and just all really be aligned on a common goal. Speaking of that, we've also started our reading volunteer movement. Luckily, we have paired all but two classrooms with a reading volunteer, and they have committed to come at least once a month into our school and read one-on-one with our students, just to kind of give that one-on-one attention to our kids, listen to them read, and just, you know, get involved again in alignment with that goal of really getting our community members and our parents back in our building. So we are excited about that as well. One other thing that I wanted to mention is that our staff participated in professional development this afternoon along with staff from Fred Anderson, and it was with ENC, ABA, and it was on challenging behaviors in the classroom setting, and it was wonderful. It was part one of a part-two series, and we are really grateful to Ms. Davis for providing the opportunity for our staff for both schools. It was just wonderful. Again, we just want to thank you all for what you do. Please come see us anytime. We'd be glad to have you, and happy School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you again.
We want to thank our principals. And board members, I hope you feel appreciated. We do truly appreciate everything that you do for us. The last part of the superintendent update is not my update to give. I'm going to call Mr. Henry Rice to come up and give a new school update. We have been doing this for months on end, kind of anticipating things happening, but you probably noticed, there's a lot of things happening, and he's going to tell you what's going on over here with our construction project.
It's a big change since the last time I spoke to you guys. As you can see, there's a lot of things that you can see around the fence and behind the fence. I started to skip this because I've done it every time, but we've got a couple of new folks, so I'm just going to kind of go through it real quick. We started our process with submitting to DPI and County Review on March first, the construction documents, and they were approved sometime before June eighteenth. They were ready for bid on June twentieth, and we had our bid day on August seventh. And there was a couple of issues with a couple of the bids not having enough people to bid on, so we had to extend that and have another bid day. so we had to extend that and have another bid day before we could award all the bids, but we came in under budget at, at the end. Um, we received our notice to proceed on October eighteenth, and we began construction on November the seventh. For progress report, that's what I'm talking about now. The building is still expected to be completed around the first week of, uh, May in twenty-twenty-six. And in that summer, we're gonna demolish the high school and work on our parking lot construction. Parking lot construction is gonna be a little later than the June, or the actual school start, the August deadline, that's due to some, uh... Um, it was gonna cost a whole lot more money to get them to work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to, uh, get that parking lot ready, but we've got some plans to be able to work around that. So, this is a letter, a nasty letter that we got from the, uh, construction, um, manager, saying that, uh, it was pretty much covering their, um, sales because there was a delay, because there was, um, issue with our sewer permits. And luckily, that issue didn't turn out to be an issue because like two or three last days after we got this letter, the, um, at-risk permit came through, and we were able to only miss one day in the construction. I got news today, I haven't shared this, that they're gonna write us another letter kinda retracting what they said in this letter.
Good, we want that retracted.
Purpose of this letter is at the end of the thing, it, when it's time for the school to open, they've not met that deadline, they can say, "Well, we sent you all these letters saying why we weren't gonna meet that deadline." Bad news is, he also said he's gonna send me another one to cover the two days of snow we missed last week. Um, I shared this the last time about our construction trailer out here in this parking lot. It's since been put together, and this occupied now plumbing works, lights, electricity work. Um, at the end of the construction, that, that construction trailer will become our trailer, like the one we had out here in, in the parking lot previously. And construction began with the demolition of the, uh, baseball field, um, the press box and the bleachers, and you can see some of the trees that went away. Um, somebody mentioned earlier, there was a gas break, uh, gas line break, that was a minor issue. We did have to move some people around the school for a couple hours, but it worked around the lunch area, and the lunch room wasn't involved, so it really didn't interrupt too much of the school day, and it was fixed, capped, and hopefully we won't have a gas problem anymore. Um, the pad construction, that's what you see now when you ride by, and all the dirt that's been brought in. Um, it's quite impressive. You can see some of the dirt here in dump trucks that are, um, unloading, bulldozers and rollers. So, it's actually four feet above the actual original surface. You really can't tell it when you look in on this side, but if you go down High School Drive and look over back towards the football field, you can tell how high it is over there with some of the trucks and tractors and things sitting on top of it. It's pretty impressive, I've used that word quite a few times. Uh, on top of the, the dirt, there's six inches of stone, so, uh, and they've done four tests on it. That was Terracotta that, that did those tests, and it's ninety-nine percent compacted, so it's pretty much as hard as it's gonna get. I drove on it, this is a picture of it now. Uh, this is actually what the school looked like, I believe this area probably the middle school gym. That's my car and one of the trucks. It's hard, it's, it's just as hard as this floor as we're standing on right now, and it's just unbelievable after watching that truckload of, truckload of dirt come in. Aggregates, this is some of the equipment that you're seeing out now, out there now, I'm sure you've, um, can, not concerned, but, uh, have questions about what's going on out there. So, if you remember several weeks ago over by the courthouse, they were banging these, uh, pylons in the ground for that new building that's behind the finance office. Well, this is something similar, but there's no banging going on, and they're not, um, uh, wood, they are actually concrete. Uh, that's what they do, this, uh, auger, which looks like a big drill bit, drills a hole in the ground, about thirty feet. This other machine comes over on top of it, it puts a pipe in, and then this, uh, uh, bucket right here, they come in and dump a load of rock in it, and it goes down into the hole, pour cement in it, it shakes it, gets it all compact, then they come put more rock in it until it fills up the hole all the way to the top. There's actually, um, there'll be a total of five hundred of these on there, on that, um, pad. Right now, they've completed two hundred and fifty of them, so that's half. And they tell us that if they can have ten working days, they'll be finished with that. Which is good, 'cause that'll give us some time to the good, because I think they were scheduled like eight or nine weeks to be here, and they're gonna be out in probably four or five, so that's really good. If we missed ten days, they didn't work last week, it's not really hurt us too bad. Power line, we had a power line issue, still have a power line issue. Um, there's a, a line that runs down what used to be the, um, road that run between the baseball field and the football field. There's a line that runs down right beside it or above it, and there's a pole. It's down here, that, you see the line right there? But the pole is inside the pad, they had to work around. Last week during the long weekend, they actually, Duke Power came and took the lines down so they could put the piers in, in that area without disturbing the, the lines. So the electricity was off at the high school for probably forty-eight hours or so. They came back on Monday, put the lines back up, and power's back on. When the power went off on Saturday morning, I came in with one of the guys from MetCon, walked around the school to see what those lines actually powered, because nobody knew, there was no maps, and nobody knew what those lines went to. It actually went to about two-thirds of the school, which was a lot more than we had anticipated. We thought it was just the gym area, but it went all the way to everything except the English hall and, and the new cafeteria, really, so... Anyway, um, they put the lines back up, they're gonna come back in probably a month or so, Duke can, and remove that pole and put a different power source in for the school. I told you all that? Ooh, I didn't tell you that, there is a cost to this, uh, moving this pole. There wasn't a cost to take the lines down, but to move the pole and the power source is twenty-one thousand, thirty-one dollars, thirty-three cent. And where does that money come from? It, it actually comes out of the construction budget. Um, there's contingency money in that budget, there's a, um, construction management, uh, contingency, and there's also an owner contingency, we're the owner. Um, we want this to come out of the construction manager's contingency. I think the construction manager feels like it should come out of our contingency, so we're gonna have a, have some discussions on that, just because it's not really our fault. We, they knew it was there when they started this. There's a couple of other things that are going to, I may even talk about it in a little bit, but we have to have discussions on those things, because at the end, whatever's left of the owner contingency, we keep to, to re-put back in for additional things into the school. And the construction manager's contingency is split half and half, whatever's left. So, he's trying to keep as much as he can so he can make more money, so... Internet outage, we had an internet outage, uh, last week, on Tuesday, the day that we got out of school early. So it was kind of a perfect storm, as Dr. Johnson said, uh, everything happens at once, so we let school out early, but we've got to call parents, let them, let them know. We also have to receive calls, when they call and say, "What did they say on the telephone?", 'cause I didn't get the whole message. So, we got through that pretty good, and I'll explain what happened. You see these two maps up here? Um, the map over on the right with the paint lines, that, that is, uh, our internet lines that come out of, um, Fred Anderson, the IT building, which is the gym in the back, which is located here, and it goes out to all the schools from there. This map is, um, Brightspeed's map, where the internet company that services us, their internet comes to us, and it comes down Highway fifty-five. This is the road that goes around the auditorium, high school sits right here. Um, and it comes here and it goes down the old football field, and nobody knew about this, uh, supposedly. Um, they were told there was, right, they said you shouldn't have located lines. The construction people said they did locate lines, and there was nothing here. The, the light, the work ethic, along this area right around here, where one of the, um, piers went in the ground on Monday morning. So we came back on Tuesday without internet. Um, anyway, if everything's working, the internet comes in here, it goes into the building down there, and then we send it out to the schools. Because, um, our internet, our phones are out through the internet, so we lost telephones too. Service was restored on Thursday while we were out, so luckily we had a couple of days with snow days, so we were hungry, it didn't affect the, the whole one. I can show you right here, right here is, there's an X, you can't really see it good, but that's, that's where the break was at. That's Fred Anderson in the back, Anderson drives here, that's the building right right now. Yeah, here goes another fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Okay, again, we feel that should come out of the, uh, construction's contingency money. I think this is gonna be easier sell than, than the other ones. What's next? Um, geothermal, they're gonna start putting in the wells? They were gonna start last week, and we had the snow. Um, they were hoping to get it from yesterday or tomorrow. There's gonna be about, about two hundred and fifty wells. And we will have plumbing starting soon, that's the underground piece. Uh, starts February fifteenth, they're hoping. Uh, they had their safe start meeting last week on Thursday or Friday. And Kate will be doing that plumbing. Uh, electricians, uh, the underground part of that will be here next, uh, also February fifteenth. That's Triple R, and concrete. Uh, Raleigh East will be doing the concrete for the slab, and I think the whole building, actually. Um, I actually said in their safe start meeting on Friday last week, it was pretty, uh, informative. Excuse me. This is in the trailer next door, the construction trailer, this is their, kind of, what's going on in the, right now, so they can know, see it on the board, and see what's going on. It talks about groundwater prevents and those things. Over here is a countdown clock, and I took that picture this weekend, so... Um, we've got about four hundred and eighty days until hopefully this project's complete. Baseball field. Um, so, here's our breakdown on our budget for the baseball field. The clearing of the land, the grading, playing surface, uh, fencing, lighting, uh, the, the well for irrigation and electricity from, uh, Duke. Um, and here's the cost that we've had approved. Uh, it's one point two two nine million. The budget in, our MetCon budget was, um, one point two million, which is over by twenty-nine, six ninety. We've got a hundred thousand dollar grant, so actually we've got remaining funds of seventy thousand dollars. Here's some things that haven't been covered in that seventy thousand dollars, just got to cover that seventy thousand dollars. We got a quota of dugouts that includes a ten thousand dollars for concrete, um, fifteen thousand dollars for school board, the backstop and everything, seventeen thousand. Um, and that puts us over budget by sixteen thousand dollars. A little better than I was really expecting, but we also have to have some sidewalks, and they've got to go almost out to the parking lot to make it a, a, a plan. We're hoping that we can get a little bit more money out of the, um, school budget when some of those contingency money start to, uh, um, we realize that we won't have to use some of them, so we might can move some of those over. Um, here's our plan to get through until the school is fin, until the field is finished. Uh, we're hoping to be able to play possibly the second or third week in March against Lejeune, that's the first conference game. Uh, Carolina Greens who are there now, I'll show you some pictures in a few minutes of what's going on right now. They assured us that they would be out in six weeks, and he was really more optimistic until it plus the four weeks, so hopefully we'll get some extra time there as well. Uh, so we're gonna share fields a little bit to start with, but it's not too bad when you look at it over here. High school athletic association, it takes, it takes with you to start, um, high school. Middle school doesn't really have that strict, um, start stuff thing. So in middle school, we're gonna have trials in middle school on Monday, Tuesday, the first or the second week in February, and the high school and middle school for trials, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then, the following week, the high school's gonna practice at the reg field over here. They've got a scrimmage game in the middle that week. And the following week, again, they'll practice over here and have two away games. So, seven days of practice in the, not in February, not here on our field. And then we go into March, the first two weeks, uh, we've got home games, we're gonna play those at the middle school. Uh, away games here, which is gonna be a deal, again, practice at the reg field. There was some scheduling here with middle school and high school games that we're gonna be able to flip off those. I think they've already been taken care of, but I don't know for sure, so I don't, I don't tell you that. These two games, where I said, are gonna be played at the middle school, because they really want to try to play them somewhere else, like in Kafer Park. Um, we're gonna meet, we haven't talked about it, I don't know. Um, he has some concerns about the middle field, middle school field. I know Dr. Johnson and I went over there and looked. Uh, one of the issues is the backstop behind home plate is really close, it's not very far, so that, that's a major issue there. Not necessarily dangerous, but it's just not, um, the appropriate playing size. And then hopefully, like I said, we can start playing on our new field, um, March twenty-first. And we've got a few games in April as well. Here's some pictures, the well that was put in, or this is in the process of installing the well, this is for irrigation system. Mr. President, I know you had a question about would they hook to the well, would we have to go to them? They'll come up to the well. Um, here is the, where the baseball field is being laid out. This is the, the grading people, they're trying to level the land, you see all the dirt that they've rolled in. Here's a familiar backside, um, Howard Luton, he's doing our survey through, uh... I just... I'm sorry. Uh, and there's Coach Davis out here, you can picture him out, he's got, at where the rubber is, that's home plate. Um, so he helped us line up the, the bases and things where they're supposed to be. Notice I say he, volunteer, that was good. Um, those tractors and everything belong to Carolina Greens. Right here in this picture, you can actually see light on the infield and the backside of the infield here. This happened this morning, they brought clay in, so that's pretty cool. That's why our school board's gonna look like fifteen thousand dollars school. I believe that's it. I was trying to ask you questions, I didn't, I get to...
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Something different every day, I appreciate all that you're doing, Mr. Rice, thank you for your leadership in that.
Mr. Rice, could you share that with us?
Absolutely.
That was a good presentation, thank you for that information.
All right, well, that, that will do it for the superintendent report, do any board members have anything, board member time?
I would just like to say I went to the, um, art show yesterday at the women's club in, in Oriental, and I was really impressed with all of the students' artwork. Uh, it, it was wonderful, it was a great art show, and, and some of the students, it was just amazing, some of their artworks. So congratulations to the students, uh, and also to the chorus that presented, performed, I should say, and, um, and also to our arts teachers, thank you, that was great. And, and thank you, um, for our board appreciation items.
Any other board members?
I too wanna say thank you, those little darlings, thank you so very much, and I'm like them, we couldn't have done it without you, 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 and you. So we appreciate you, it made me feel some kind of good to come up here and see all the goodies that we had. So, thank you so much, knowing that you didn't have to, but you did, it was appreciated, thank you.
Any other board members? All right, we're gonna move on then on our agenda. Our consent agenda, we've got... Our consent agenda, we've got several overnight field trips to approve. ROTC is going to a lot of places. It looks exciting, yeah. Going to Alabama. Is this, would be, this be the first time to Alabama?
First time in school history that we qualified for nationals for Oriental.
For Oriental, yeah, great, great. We can approve all these at one time, or if we need to remove any, vote on them individually. Question, Kathy?
I just have one question.
Okay.
I was just wondering if, I noticed on a couple of the ROTC approval forms, that there were a couple of chaperones who hadn't gotten their approval yet. Have they been approved by now?
They are all at the board level already, pending approval.
I see no issue with getting that approval, yeah.
And so if, if there was an issue, then they would just be replaced with somebody else, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a contingency for that.
You have what?
We have a contingency for that.
Okay. I love the ROTC, so I'm all for them going and participating in all of those events. Yes.
Yeah, the aircraft carrier and submarine, that sounds like a really fun trip.
We want to see pictures of the paintballing and the volunteering at the zoo.
I was gonna say the volunteering at the zoo, yeah.
Yes, that sounds fun.
Yep.
Would you like for me to get you a shot at the chaperone?
I would love that. I don't want to play paintball, but I would love to go to the zoo and to the air, yeah, that sounds fun.
Maybe take pictures and do a presentation when y'all get back from all these trips. That would be great, yeah.
We need to make an amendment to put Miss Doll on.
If one of the other ones don't work out, then I'll pick up the second.
Any more questions on these? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve all as presented.
Motion, second.
Motion, second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Y'all have fun. Thank y'all for what y'all do. All right, we're gonna move on to finance now.
Good evening. I have quite a few things to talk to you about tonight, so I'll try to make it brief, but if, if you have questions, please stop me so that I can go back to whatever you have questions about. The first item on my report tonight is a mid-year budget update. And I think that I explained to you several months back when we were talking about budget, that I would give you an update about halfway through the year. So, the information that is included in your attachment is a board update report, and it reflects all of the funds. And basically, it goes in program report code order. So PRC is a word you'll hear me say, or an acronym you'll hear me say a lot, but it's a program report code, and it essentially tells you what the funding is to be used for. So if I say PRC oh oh one, it is for classroom teachers. And that's how this report is laid out. So it will start at the beginning with state fund one, and then it will continue forward. But basically, what I want you to notice is as we go through these different PRCs that are grouped by fund, what the percentage utilized is, which is in the far right column. So you'll see at the top of the header, it says year-to-date, plus PO percentage. That's how much of that fund has been spent. So, when you're looking at a full year of operations, and you, you look at the first six months, you should technically be about fifty percent spent in your state budget. So as we start, notice that the first several PRCs, so zero zero one is classroom teachers, zero two is central office administration, zero three is non-instructional support, so that pays for things like clerical staff in the schools and support staff. Zero zero four is your program enhancement teachers. If you look down this line all the way to zero zero seven, you'll notice that most of those are in the range between forty-seven and about fifty-two percent. So, as far as those starting PRCs and state funds, we're about where we should be. Some are a little higher, some are a little lower, but on average, they're right around fifty percent. When you get to PRC zero zero nine, we are sitting at seventy-two point two eight percent. I don't want that to worry you, because PRC oh oh nine is what the Department of Public Instruction considers a guaranteed allotment. So the only things that get paid from that code are things like, an employee retires and you pay out their thirty days of annual leave. If they are a state-paid teacher, when they retire, and they have payouts for annual leave or bonus leave, whatever types of leave they have saved that are available to be paid, that is where that funding comes from. So when we start the school year, we basically look at previous year's history, and we choose a number that looks on average to be what we have spent in that PRC. And that is what we adopt when we adopt our budget. That money may, it may end up being more or less, depending upon how many people retire, the salaries of those people, all those factors influence that number. Basically, what we will do is I will bring you a bu, a budget amendment, and we will increase the budget in zero zero nine. It does not affect any of our local money. It's just putting the budget there so that you can spend up to that amount. Because what DPI does is regardless of how much you pay over the course of the year, in that allotment, they cover it. It's never on any report that we get. It's not on our allotment sheet, but because they call it a guaranteed allotment, it means that it is paid by DPI regardless of the amount. So when you see seventy-two percent there, I don't want you to be worried. But moving on, the other PRCs under that are, are similarly in a good place. Drivers training is a little low in comparison to the others, but notice that when we get to fund eight later, we ended up spending some of our local dollars first for drivers' ed, so we'll be paying the remainder of the school year invoices, and we will have spent that by the end of the year. Because last year, we had more costs in drivers' ed than we had state funds. So we set aside some money in fund eight to help cover drivers' ed costs this year. Moving on down, PRC fourteen and CTE is at seventy-six percent. Again, this is okay, because what happens is CTE gets three different budgets. They get PRC thirteen, which is the positions that pay for teachers. They get dollar allotments, which is PRC fourteen, that's for program support, and they also get federal dollars. Like we've talked about before, the federal dollars don't come in until November or December. So upfront costs are generally paid from the state money, and then we use the federal money as soon as it comes in. So we'll be able to balance the costs for the, the next six months between the federal money that CTE uses and the state. So, continue looking down. There's nothing really alarming on that first page. We do have a little bit of funding remaining in teacher assistance. We're under in that PRC. And that's due to turnover and vacancies that we've had throughout the year, but we have positions in state PRC nineteen that we will be able to use any available funds in the teacher allotment, teacher assistant allotment. You have any questions on that first page? I know that was a lot. Any questions? As you move forward on page two, again, nothing jumps out in those first few PRCs. They are running right about fifty percent until you get down to the SRO grant funds. Okay, so PRC thirty-nine is the money we receive from the state to pay for three of our SROs. This year, we did receive less funding in this category. Last year, we ran about a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So we're a little short of what we received last year. So we will need to look at additional funding sources to be able to cover the amount that is required for SROs this year. So you'll see that zero percent spent there. That is because we just got that allotment in December, and the county typically bills us around this time of year. An installment usually around the end of January, and then another installment in May. So we'll be getting those bills and paying that out of that grant. We also have not spent anything in the PRC forty-six or forty-eight yet. That's because those funds just came in as well. They're for teacher bonuses related to AP courses, CTE courses, reading and math bonuses. So those bonuses were paid in the January paycheck. And since this report is just through December, it's showing zero percent spent, but those will all be spent, and those were paid to teachers actually this month. The transportation budget, I also wanted to point out, is looking, looking at that, is fifty-nine percent spent. But that is because in transportation, they have a lot of open purchase orders that they do at the beginning of the year. And that's effectively setting aside money that the director knows they will spend on parts, or supplies, or services for the buses. So they go ahead and set up those POs at the beginning of the year that will carry those costs for the entire year. So, basically, you've already got money set aside for a lot of repairs, parts, things of that nature for the whole year. So, we're in good, in good shape in transportation as well. If you move to page three, you'll see on the left, it says total for fund one. So, in our fund one, which is your state funds budget, you're at forty-eight point eight eight percent spent, which is good for this time of year. You want to spend your state money. Your state money does not carry over. Needs to be spent first. Federal money, you can carry over, so if you spend the state first, and you can hold the federal to help you start the next school year if you need to. So, moving forward, the next section is your fund two, PRCs. Which, fund two is your local current expense budget. This is the money that we receive from the county. So I'll go through these. These, for the, for the most part, at the beginning, same story. We're running between forty-eight and fifty-four percent for those initial categories. We do have, again, in PRC oh oh nine, we have to provide more funding in this area. PRC oh oh nine is the same as it is in state. It's just for locally paid staff. So any locally paid staff that receive longevity payments, any locally paid staff that receive annual leaves payouts, that money comes from this budget. So, we have already spent the twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars that was allowed in this year's budget. So I will need to look at our local budget as we progress through this year. See if there's any funding available anywhere to help with those costs. But if not, if we continue this trend, and we're pretty much spending what we thought we were going to spend, we will need to do an allotment from fund balance to help with this category, because we're already at a hundred percent spent in that category. Teacher assistance, PRC oh twenty-seven in local. That amount reflects a hundred percent spent, but that's fine, because the only thing we pay from that category of funding in local is the eight hundred dollar supplement that is paid to our classified staff in November. And that, you know, has already been satisfied, so we don't have any more costs in that area for this year. Charter schools, I'm watching very closely. We have paid about five payments out of twelve, so we're at forty-seven percent. That one could go over by a little from what we budgeted, based on what I'm seeing. We're spending about sixty-one thousand dollars a month that goes to the charter schools. So we'll have to continue to monitor that budget in local as well. The other areas there are all around the fifty percent mark or less. The one that is trending a little higher, and we already kind of knew that this was gonna be the case, just looking at last year's billings, was our utilities fund. So PRC eight thirty. We pay all of our utilities from that category, and that category is running about fifty-seven percent. So, just pray for a mild spring and mild May, and we'll see how that one goes. Moving on to the next page, page four, the top category is insurance, and it looks like we haven't spent a lot there either. But that's because property insurance and flood insurance bills will come in February. So that will pretty much be completely spent after we pay those two premiums. We are running a little high on our facilities, maintenance costs at fifty-nine percent. So again, between the utilities, the PRC oh nine for benefits, and the facilities, those are the areas that we need to watch, along with the charter school for local. So if you see on the left side where it says total for fund two, we're sitting at fifty-one point nine percent in local. So we're, we're on the edge of where we should be. The next group of PRCs is federal. So, you'll notice these trends are a little less. They're probably in the forty percents spent. But that's, again, because federal funds come in later, November, December. We're not at the same level with spending of those. But, all of them basically are spoken for, so we are trending in a good way as far as on, on the percentage spent for each of those. Some of them, small pots like PRC one fifteen, was all spent, that went towards EC contract services. So, we'll be, we'll be watching all of these areas as well. And then on page five, you'll see the total for fund three, federal grant funds, we're sitting about forty-three percent. So, I, I really don't have any concerns there with the federal funds. The next segment is your capital budget, which is also money from our county commissioners. And if you look at these, a lot of the, the capital budget is spent. Currently, we're at sixty-nine percent spent for the total capital budget. But that is because there are very specific things that are listed in the capital budget. So, for example, PRC eight oh two is for site improvements and transportation or maintenance equipment. And we've already spent part of that money for gym floor repairs at the high school. PRC eight oh four, we use that money to pay for school furniture and a lease payment on the mower at the high school. PRC eight oh five is our technology services, so that's the purchases of all school computers, technology for the district, and that budget is sixty-four percent spent. But you would expect that, because we purchase devices throughout the year to replenish devices as they age out. So, then moving on, child nutrition, fund five, is at thirty-nine point seven percent spent, so that's good. The child nutrition budget looks good this year. The revenues are coming in about what the expenses are. And then fund eight. Fund eight is the last group that is a specific PRC. It's called other restricted funds, and it is used mainly for grant revenue and restricted funding sources. So, all of those budgets at the beginning are running about where they should be, fifty-one percent. Notice the driver training budget that is there for twelve thousand dollars on page six. That is a hundred percent spent, because we paid bills initially from that prior to the state money coming in. PRC oh thirty-two is the EC contract services budget, and that is over spent. So we've had conversations. We, we've talked with the county about this area, and how we've already used the pots we had available in our state funds. We've used the federal funds that we could use, and this pot of money that was set aside, the forty-one thousand there for EC contract services, has been spent. So this is an area we know we need to look at. This was the area that we went to the county commissioners on January sixth about. And we're, we're still having conversations about what we can do in that area and what the county can help us with. Because those contract services expenses are so much higher this year. Looking at the other parts of this budget, you can see there's a Bosch foundation grant that has been spent. You can see the NC pre-K budget is at forty-nine percent, so that is good. And then, earlier, Mr. Rice mentioned a grant for the baseball field. That's PRC eight oh four for the A.J. Fletcher Grant. And we have received twenty-five thousand this year. We haven't had to spend very much of it yet. So overall, on that last page, the total expenses for all funds are sitting at forty-nine point six two percent. Can I answer any questions for you on that? It's a lot. But overall, I mean, it's good to see that we're sitting right about the halfway point. Just a couple areas that we need to monitor. And we'll know more in the, in the next few months. Any questions? That's just receive as information, so. That's just receive as information, so I'll keep you updated. Um, if no questions, I'll move to the second item. Good, okay. PRC seventy-one supplemental funds for teachers is an allotment that started in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The state created this recurring funding allotment to provide additional salary supplements to teachers and specific instructional support personnel such as guidance, media and psychologists. The amount received in this allotment from the state varies from year to year. So the state requires that we bring to the board a plan for utilizing this fund, this funding. So you'll see in your attachment, um, PRC seventy-one, um, the scale that we came up with this year was for teachers in year zero, which would be starting out to year five. Um, a supplement payment of two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for years six through ten. The amount would increase to three thousand dollars for years eleven through fourteen, the amount would be three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And for teachers with fifteen plus years, the amount would be three thousand five hundred. Um, the state does not tell you how to do your scale, they basically tell you what the cap can be for your teachers. And then you have to work backwards to make sure that you can pay all the retirement and FICA benefits that go along with those amounts. So we took our group of teachers and we broke them down by categories, by years of service. And because we know that the state salary scale does not reward teachers above fifteen years, we made the highest supplement payment for teachers that were fifteen plus years. I think this is similar to what was done last year when we paid this amount. And last year we paid this along with the regular February twenty-ninth paycheck, so that would be my recommendation as well. It would be reflected as a separate item on the pay stub, um, so that the teachers could see that, um, state supplement. Um, but we would pay it at the same time. I just need your consideration and approval to be able to pay that. If you have any questions.
Any questions on this one? It aligned, like as Ms. Altman said, it aligns with what we did last year, so if there are no questions, we do have to approve it. So entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand and motion carries.
Thank you. The last item that I have is a state budget amendment, is a state budget amendment number nine. Um, and it is recognizing funding that was received. Um, the first amount is for, uh, SRO grant funds, you'll see that amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, the second amount is the read to achieve teacher bonus amounts that are in PRC forty-six of six thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. And then there is the teacher bonuses that are in PRC forty-eight, that is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. We also received our CTE credentialing funds that pay for our credentials for our students and summer camp funds for twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. There was a five thousand dollar feminine hygiene grant we received. And then we received, um, some special state reserve funding for our children with disabilities. So that is sixty-four thousand five hundred and six dollars. And that can be used to help pay some of the costs of our services for EC students. So the total amendment is adding two hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars to our state budget.
Any questions on this? Okay, we do have to approve this, so if there are no questions, entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand and motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Time to start talking about the school calendar again. Um, originally this item was coming to you tonight for possible action. However, because we missed several days last week due to inclement weather, we did not have the opportunity to discuss this with our parent advisory team and our teacher advisory committee. And so that is on the agenda for tomorrow afternoon and Thursday afternoon. So in light of that, I'm just bringing this to you for information tonight. We have started the feedback process for drafting the calendar for next year. Our schools have had the opportunity to give us some feedback and our district leadership team as well. And there were three really overwhelming kind of, um, themes in the feedback. One was our teachers need more time, they, they need more workdays, um, throughout the year, not necessarily at the beginning and the end, but throughout the course of the school year to, to get certain things done. Um, another was if possible, please let's not start school on a Monday. Um, that is a long week after you've had all summer off. And teachers, if you've ever been in the classroom, it is nice to get two days of the beginning of the year kind of things out of the way, two or three days, and then start fresh on a Monday with your units and, and the things that you're wanting to teach. And then because of the situation we're in with the new school, it is imperative that we get out of school as early as possible this year so that we can begin the transition from what is now Pamlico County High School to what will be our new building. So with those three things in mind, we started to look at what drafting a calendar could be like for next year. And we know that if we want to get out earlier, our options are either add time to the school day, which is what a neighboring county did this year, or start school earlier. And that opens the conversation to how do we go about starting school earlier? And so what I've shared with you tonight, or what's been shared with you tonight are two things. One is a calendar waiver request that could potentially, we could consider using this for an earlier start date. Now, when we talk about an earlier start date, we're not talking about starting the first of August. In the draft calendars that we have, the schools have come up with and we've been looking at, we're only talking about maybe two days. Really trying to starting that Thursday before maybe August twenty-sixth instead of starting on that Monday. So, um, but one of the things that has to be, we have to be able to verify in using this calendar waiver is that over the course of the last ten years, within four of those years, we have to have been out of school for at least eight days. The days don't have to be consecutive, but we have to say that all of our schools in our district were out for eight days. This could have been hurricane, this could have been snow, it could have been any reason. So thanks to Mr. Rice and his cell phone and our Google Drives and all the things, we've been able to go back and look at pictures and meeting notes and agendas and things, and we've been able to verify that we would fall in that category, that we could potentially sign to have this waiver approved, that we could get an earlier start date. Just a couple of things when you're looking at this and thinking about it, we still want to maintain that calendar that allows us to break at Christmas, that keeps us in line with the community college schedule. Getting out early in the draft calendars that we've looked at so far puts us getting out the Friday before Memorial Day, which is actually in line with PCA and the charter school. Um, actually our start date would be pretty much in line with when they started this year. So as a county, we would be starting and ending school around the same time, all the schools. It's still a short first semester and a long second semester, but it would be seventy-nine days in the first semester and eighty-eight days in the second semester, which is not that far off from what we had this year and the year prior. Also, one of the things that we looked at, because we have to think about instructional time, we've always gone by hours instead of days. So we have to hit that one thousand twenty-five hours for our calendar to be considered legitimate for the state. And this year, we had nine, almost nine extra days built into the time that we go to school. And fortunately we had those days because the days we missed last week, we don't have to make up. However, nine is a lot of days to have in the bank. And so the calendars that we're looking at have a, have a little fewer days in the bank for us for next year. But we would still have about five days if we were to go with this calendar. So it would still give us about a week's worth of cushion before we would have to look at adding days or making things up. Um, what you have also in your packets tonight, I apologize for the length of the document that Tiffany sent. Um, actually that is the entire school attendance and student accounting manual. You only really needed to reference chapter seven, but if you need some reading for the evening, you're welcome to read more. But in chapter seven, it goes into all requirements for a calendar, so it goes into those eleven legislative requirements. Um, and I think the groups that have had to work to practice drafting a calendar have recognized how, how extremely difficult that is to hit all eleven of those markers. And again, we'll be looking at that with our parents and our teachers later in the week. But also it explains the waiver. And just for your information, if we were to decide to go with this waiver, we would be looking at option two. And option two, two just includes this current school year, so, um, any days that we missed. And really just for your information, they did that because of the district in the western part of the state because obviously they're going to all hit that marker of missing at least eight days or more. And so you'll see lots in there that references, this has just been updated in January um, to include the situations that our western partners are facing. So tonight, this is just for you to look at, I'll be happy to answer any questions I can now, but we're going to be bringing this back around to you in the February meeting after we've talked with our teachers and our parents. Also after district leadership has had the opportunity to review it again. And then hopefully we'll give you a look at three calendars. One being a calendar that if we were to go with this waiver and it were to be approved, what it might look like. A calendar that falls within those traditional legislative requirements of start date and end date. And then a calendar that still allows us to get out by that May twenty-second date, but that would require us adding time to the instructional day. So lots to consider, lots to think about. Um, please email me, call me if you leave here tonight or start thinking about anything and you want to discuss it. Um, but we will, um, have that feedback from our two stakeholder groups when we meet with you again. Yes, sir.
So if we apply for the waiver and was to, uh, be granted the waiver, um, and we, uh, went with that particular calendar, what would happen in the future years? Would we have to reapply for the waivers to make the calendar reflect the previous years or?
It's my understanding that you would have to apply for a waiver every year you would want that request to be granted. So, um, you know, we're really looking at this from two angles. One, we would like to start a little bit earlier because we would like to get out a little bit earlier. And that really is centered around, we need to, to move quickly to get everything ready for the new high school so that we can move in in August. Um, but there's, we're looking at it from the need to start earlier. So it's not necessarily true that our calendar would match the next year. I think we have more of a har- hardship case this year based on trying to get out earlier than we would the, the next year. So again, I will bring this back around to you in February, but if you have questions in the meantime or any questions about chapter seven, just feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Um, have several items for you tonight. Um, I met with the policy review committee and we reviewed nine policies, uh, that, uh, were updated either by State Board of Education, uh, changes, uh, legislative or statutory changes. And so those things are being presented to you tonight, the changes are minor. So I am asking you to, um, waive your policy that requires a second read, adopt those changes on, uh, first read tonight. Also have another policy, policy four thousand and four slash fifty twenty-one private therapy providers that I'm also asking you to, uh, adopt on first read tonight. Uh, it was reviewed by the committee, uh, did get feedback from Ms. Davis in the EC department as well as feedback from principals and our attorney. And everyone has given a thumbs up and they feel comfortable, uh, with us moving forward with that policy tonight. So I'm asking you if you would like to take action now to, again, rescind your, uh, policy requiring two reads and adopt those, uh, nine or ten policies tonight on first read.
Um, I did have a question on, um, twenty-three oh two.
Yes.
Uh, the remote participation in board meetings.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so it's my understanding that, um, the, uh, when we have board meetings, we cannot, uh, participate, um, virtually.
You can participate virtually, however, you're only observing the meeting for information only. Uh, you cannot vote, uh, and also I, I do not believe you count towards a quorum if you are viewing virtually. The only chance, the only possibility, uh, that you can vote and that, that you can be a part of the quorum if there is a state declared emergency. And that is a, I believe that's a legislative change.
There was some judicial stuff on that earlier, end of last year.
Yeah, we had some discussion on that, there's a case out of Anson County. The, the circumstances and the facts of that case are a lot different, but they called an emergency meeting and five minutes later held the meeting. And so, so there were definitely some problems with that. But this policy, did you get this policy from the school board association? So the, the, the policies that they're putting out, the school board association is putting out, is it's distinguishing between having a remote meeting during a, a declared emergency and remote meetings otherwise. And so it lays out the grounds in which you can have a remote meeting when there's not like a state declared, um, situation of, of emergency. And, and you already had a similar policy that laid out a preference for in-person attendance for board members unless there was something that kept a board member from being able to attend in person, like a, some kind of commitment. And also kind of put a cap on how many times a board member was participating virtually. So all that is to say, it's not that you can't do it, it's just clarifying in light of that Anson County case, what the conditions are for virtual participation and what the distinctions are depending on the, that, whether there's a state emergency or not. It does speak to whether we can have wholly virtual board meetings, which is a different thing than allowing a board member to participate virtually.
So it, it, I guess my question, if a situation was to arise that, um, needed immediate attention and, you know, we're all in our respective areas during the course of the day, uh, we, we wouldn't be able to conduct any business in that particular situation which warrants, um, an immediate response.
And I'll say COVID brought all this on. Pre-COVID, the board, we, we had to call a special meeting and we had to find a time that would work with everybody. And we had to meet here, have a quorum to do it. COVID hit, that opened the doors for virtual meetings and it's, you know, it, yeah, it was very convenient, but I, you know, we're going to have to follow what this judicial action is telling us to do.
It is, and if you look, what you're talking about, Mr. Gibbs, i- is at, um, B two. And it talks about the board will not hold a wholly remote meeting in the absence of a state declared emergency. So in other words, you're not calling a, an emergency meeting and meeting, um, remotely like online for a meeting unless there's a state declared emergency.
And I know, I, I think it was Hurricane Irene, we actually, we had to call a meeting and, and the board actually met to take action on some things with that as well, so it's, it's, uh, it's what we're going to have to do. I guess we have no way around it. Any other questions on these, everybody had these in your pocket to review. Um, so we're, we're being asked tonight, and Rachel, are you okay if we waive first reading and go to second reading?
I, I am, the only policy, if it's okay with you, that I would like for y'all to hold on is the thirty-two twenty-five, the technology policy. And that's because the proposal is to remove what action can be taken if somebody violates the policy. And I'd like the board to consider that, whether you want to remove that language or not.
So the, and this is just, uh, a general question. Um, the purpose of waiving our first read, um, is it because the policies are in immediate need or?
So me, me asking you for these first nine policies, not that we have an immediate need, it's just the changes in these policies are legislative or something mandated by the State Board of Education. So essentially we don't have a choice, uh, it's either first read or second read, but we still can't alter what are, what's in these policies because it's either legislative or State Board of Education mandate. So, uh, we, we can not them tonight or we can wait till, uh, next month, but the changes really, it's nothing that we can do about.
And, and I'm not immune to, uh, waiving them, um, you know, first read. I think in, um, in future policies, I, I would like to know the policies that, uh, we can't do anything about and separate it from the policies that we can do something about in terms of waiving the, the first read. But I'm just a person of what.
And, and I would like to suggest, um, based on what Mr. Gibbs just said, the, um, the document that you gave the policy committee that had, um, information about each policy
Yes, ma'am.
would, would be good to give to all the board members because it's, it clearly says in your information on that document, it said this policy, um, you know, was due to legislation or this is low. this is local option.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that would be a good document that, I think that would help the other board members. And as far as you said about the technology policy, I asked that question about the language that had been removed, and Dr. Patrick said it had been
Included somewhere else.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that might be the case.
Yeah, I was going to go back there. So you're okay if it's in?
I'm okay if it's somewhere else. I just want to make sure that you're not, if you needed to act on somebody's violation of the policy, that you reserve the right to be able to do that.
And it's a lot more detailed than the regulation, the 43.
Yeah, yeah. Then, that's fine with me then.
So having it in the regulation as opposed to in the actual policy is, still stands the same?
It stands. The difference between the policy and the regulation is that I think the, if you're publishing the regulations, if there's any kind of amendment to it, the public is kind of entitled to notice, and you want your staff and your students and folks to know, have noticed if they can be subject to some kind of punishment on something. So if they're going to be able to, if you're going to reserve the right to take action on violations of the technology policy, you want to make sure that that information is available to the public as part of the policy manual, so that if they go to look at it, they can make decisions on whether or not, you know, on what might happen if they engage in certain behaviors.
I agree with that because if somebody just reads the policy and they don't see the regulations, then they're not going to know. So where are the regulations normally posted? They're not posted on the online document, right?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Right along with the policy?
So you'll have policy 4301, and then right behind that will be 4301-R.
Yeah.
That should be okay then, shouldn't it?
That should be fine.
And the, basically, the punishments or things that are in this regulation are basically the things that the schools are already doing. It was derived from the student code of conduct, so it's not too far off from where the sanctions or the punishments previously were.
I understand. I'm okay with that then.
So the, is that the same regulations that you provided to the policy committee?
Yes, ma'am.
And so the rest of the board didn't get that, did they, the regulations? But we reviewed that, and we were good with that. It seemed, because that was one of the things that we had questioned in our policy committee meeting, so we felt like that that was sufficient, but we can pull it and wait until next month, I mean it.
However you want to do it. If it's in the regulation, I just wanted to make sure that that language was going somewhere and not coming out completely.
I want to make sure our two new board members understand first reading, second reading, what all this discussion is about. Are you okay with it? Okay. Okay. So it's a pleasure of the board if we want to leave this as first reading, bring it back in February, or it's a pleasure of the board is to waive the first reading and then approve it tonight. So y'all let me know. I think what I'm hearing from Rachel, it's okay if we do that.
It's up to the board if you guys want to do that.
So it's okay that we can do that. So if it is the pleasure of the board to waive Policy 1514, I'll entertain a motion to do that. If I do not get a motion and second and approval, then we'll move on to second reading in February. So.
I'm okay with, you know, the first read, but like I said, in the future, I'd just like to get it separated, so
Yep.
get a better understanding of what is required and what is not.
Yep, that's a good ask. Very good.
Maybe what we should do in the future, when we conduct, when we get done with our policy board meeting, we send the whole board the decisions that we made and the reference sheets like you had for us, that way everybody has a heads up before we vote.
Yep, that'd be good. Good discussion.
So I don't know about the rest of the board, but there's a lot to read, and so if you get it, if you got it on Thursday, there was a lot to read between Thursday and tonight, so maybe could they, when we have policies to approve, if the rest of the board can get them earlier?
Absolutely.
Yeah, if we could get them earlier, that would be good, because it is a lot of reading.
Especially, especially on a weekend if it comes over a lot of
What's that? Chapter 7.
Yeah, that was a lot, too.
Option 2.
That was a whole lot.
Chapter 7, option 2, I've got it right here.
I was looking for the counter, imagine I said, they sent the whole book.
I can't, I was like, holy cow, where's it at? So.
Is it, is it fair to ask if we can get them at least two weeks in advance? Is that?
I think that shouldn't be a problem.
And, you know, because I'm a working person, so, you know, I got a lot of other things on the, on the plate.
Absolutely.
All right, just making a few notes. So if we, if we do want to waive Policy 1514 for our first read, you know, entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. So we'll move on now to approve the policy request changes as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you.
Okay. My next item, giving you tonight on first read, is Policy 5150. So I am asking that tonight, 5150 be considered for first read, and we will adopt with any changes or anything that you all see fit at the February board meeting. My third item tonight, I think this is my final item, requesting that you rescind from the old policy manual, Policy 6401, which is the student code of conduct. When we implemented the 4301-R, we did not rescind the old policy, so that the notations and things are proper on the regulation. Was advised by the attorney to have you all to rescind 6401, student code of conduct from the old policy manual, since it has been replaced with 4301R. So I need you all to take action on that so that we have a date for the notation for 4301R.
Everybody understand that? All right, entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, board members. Have a good evening.
All right, Mr. Gibbs.
Excuse me. I move that the Pamlico County Board of Education entered into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232-G and GS 115-C-402. Confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 5 and 6 and 115-C-319, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.1183.
All right, have a motion, need a second.
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be going in closed session, 7:50.
All right, we're back in open session. A few items we need to take care of. First, I need a motion to approve personnel report for action.
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. We didn't discuss that one.
We sure did.
We'll, we'll.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Okay, we'll do, I just thought we'll do that. Can we do that in February?
Yeah.
Since we didn't, we were supposed to review the district students. And we didn't, so we'll just put that on February, that's fine. We had plenty of other things. Okay, we had, we had one other topic, personnel discussion. I think Mr. Gibbs has got a motion.
I move that we hold harmless salaries for employees that were adjusted because of the late notice received by DPI for the month of January 2025 only.
Right, have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Everybody has had a chance to look at next meeting dates. I think Dr. Johnson said next Monday he's going to be at the commissioners' meeting. So if any of us can attend that, that would be great. Put it on your calendar. Our next board meeting will be the end of, near the end of February. With that, February 24th.
That's right.
All right, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. And we are adjourned.